Seven o'clock and we will call this Planning and Zoning Commission hearing to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number two, roll call. Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Girawati?
Here.
Item number three on the agenda, ex parte communications. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose?
No.
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Item four on the agenda is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted on by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the commission or public requests removal from the calendar. First up, we have item 4-1, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of June 26th, and item 4-2, the commission meeting minutes from July 10th. Does anyone wish to pull these items off consent?
No, I don't think so.
Seeing none, and seeing none from the public, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of both sets of minutes.
I can second.
Great, we'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposed, those two consent items pass, four to zero. Moving on to item five on our agenda, this is general public comment. For persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, you have up to three minutes to speak. Is there anyone here for general public comment? All right, seeing none, general public comment is closed. That brings us to item six, the regular agenda here. First up, we have item 6-1, planning application 19-0414, design review, conditional use and parking exception for a two-level addition at 1146 Evelyn Avenue.
Yes. Good evening, commission, members of the public. Before you tonight is the design review, conditional use permit and parking exception for a two-level addition at 1146 Evelyn Avenue. This will be the third time the commission has seen this project, and I'll do a quick presentation and we can answer questions afterwards. Really quickly, once again, some background on the property. The subject property is a 6,445 square foot lot with a two-bedroom, one bathroom, 1,566 square foot house built in 1950. City records show minor work done to the property in the past. The project was first seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the March 13th, 2019 hearing. At that commission hearing, the commission expressed concerns with the proposed encroachment into the required creek setback area, the overall project design, the practicality of the proposed green roof, the proposed skylight projection, the fenestration pattern, and the lack of topographic survey. Since then, the applicant has modified the project to address most, if not all, of those concerns. The project was then afterwards seen at the April 24th, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and at that hearing, the commission expressed concerns with compliance with the FEMA regulations with regard to raising the lowest floor of the proposed home, the empty appearance of the front facade, the height of the proposed skylight, once again, the lack of visibility of the green roof. They expressed a consideration of recessing the garage door about three and a half feet, also expressed the consideration of possibly placing the ADU entrance perpendicular with the front facade and to provide window detailings, including a section to show further detail with the proposed window schedule. Here's an APN of the subject property. And here's a street view of the property with the story poles in place as it rests today. And then this is some photos from our site visit. Jeff and I did a site visit to the subject property and took these photos. This photo, kind of hard to see with the lighting here, but it shows the creek and how it drops down in there.
Sorry, Chris, where is that photo taken from?
So this is along the creek side, so it's within the property on the, I guess, south, south side?
Facing south.
Facing south, correct.
So that's the property across the creek, which, okay.
And that's in Berkeley, yeah.
Yep, thanks.
And then this is just, for context, the rear of the existing home. And then this is, it's kind of hard to see vegetation on the left, but the subject property's on the left, and the adjacent property on the right, just showing that side yard, the non-conforming setbacks. And then just also, this photo illustrates the second off-street parking space in the existing parking pad that is utilized. And with that, the project request, the applicant is seeking design review for a two-level addition to the main dwelling, a conditional use permit for vertically extending the existing non-conforming walls, and a parking exception to legalize the second off-street parking space located in the front yard. Altogether, this project's scope would result in a five-bedroom, three-bathroom, 2,375 square foot home with a maximum height of 27 feet 6 inches. Here's an existing elevation. Here's what was previously proposed, and modest, but here is the revised changes. And do note that the finished floor has been raised to three feet above the adjacent grade, and there are steps now leading to the front entry porch. Project refinement, the project architect has modified the home design based on feedback received at the July 20, at the April 24th hearing. And these refinements include the lowest, raising the lowest floor of the home three feet above the grade to be consistent with Chapter 2052 of the Albany Municipal Code, and thus also achieving compliance with FEMA regulations. They've also raised the proposed second-story windows on the east facade three feet accordingly, and have raised the exterior decks three feet to be flush with the proposed finished first floor, and an extension to the entry stairs for the ADU had to be accommodated with the proposed floor increase. The proposed project scope, on the first floor, the applicant is proposing a 502-square-foot addition and remodel, which would include the kitchen, dining room, living room, guest bedroom, bathroom, laundry, and garage on the first floor. The proposed second floor would accommodate 106 square foot addition to the existing second story to accommodate four bedrooms and two bathrooms. And also, and under this project's scope is a 536-square-foot accessory dwelling unit proposed on the second story of the home, and this second unit would accommodate one bedroom and one bathroom. And just to know again, what ADUs are exempt from commission review, this would, this project's scope would lead to an increase of FAR from 24.3% to 45.2. Exceptional design, projects which exceed a .45 FAR are subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exceptional design treatments include contrasting exterior cladding materials, a new garage door and front entry door, an atrium in the dining area, a green roof, covered porches, solar panels, and exterior decks. Conditional use permit, a conditional use permit is required to vertically extend the existing north wall and a portion of the east wall, which are currently located 3.9 feet from the property line, according to the site survey. The architect is proposed to build directly on top of these walls to accommodate the proposed second-story addition and remodel to the home. And once again, the subject property is located in the Water Course Overlay District, which has an extra set of regulations for the project going forward. The project is required to comply with FEMA requirements for flood zones and other similar projects. The city requires the middle of a flood elevation certificate to be prepared and stamped by a licensed civil engineer. There is a portion within Section 2024-030 that states new construction or substantial improvements of the structures located on the flood-prone areas shall follow the regulations contained in Chapter 2052 of the AMC. And for reference, this is taken from FEMA's website, and this shows the firm map, and the red icon indicates the subject property, and it notes that it is Zone AO with a depth of two feet. So, once again, construction or substantial improvement shall have the lowest floor, including the basement, in an AO zone raised a minimum of three feet above the highest grade, adjacent grade. The applicant has modified the project design to comply with this section of the code, and the lowest floor of the home is proposed at three feet above the highest adjacent grade. And once again, here's just the proposed front elevation, and that hash line indicates the finished floor at three feet above grade. Parking exception, there are a total of two off-street parking spaces proposed for the home. One is located in the existing attached garage, and one is proposed in the existing parking pad in the front yard. The applicant is seeking a parking exception to allow the parking pad, parking space to legalize it, and no additional off-street parking spaces are triggered with the project's scope. Because the project property, the subject property is .2 miles from a bus stop on Gilman and Santa Fe, the ADU is exempt from parking as well, per state law. And here's just the proposed site plan. You'll note the expansive deck on the south west side of the property, and then the existing parking pad with the two curb cuts along the Evelyn side of the street. At the previous hearing, staff received one correspondence concerning placement of the proposed second story, I mean, second unit entry on the side of the property. Under this iteration of the project, staff has not received any correspondences formally. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15303. And recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project subject, project request subject to the attached findings and conditions of approval. You might have noted that a special condition of approval was placed by staff requiring that the proposed skylight projection be lowered to comply with height limits, and additionally, the creek protection plan conditions of approval have been included as Attachment 7 of the staff report. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one quick question of staff. So you mentioned in your presentation that the windows were raised three feet or something along those lines?
Yes.
Latest iteration?
Yeah, on the east side of east facade, according to the project architect.
So I've got both plans open, and they look exactly the same, other than the fact that the whole building's been raised up, but the window proportions all seem exactly the same all the way around the building?
We can clarify with the project architect, because that's what I got in the transmittal letter as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff?
I guess, sorry, my only other question is about the second parking space. You wanted to put a condition of approval on that with some kind of easement or?
Well, it's an existing condition, and we searched through our records to determine when that curb cut permit was issued. We actually didn't find anything in our records, which makes us believe that perhaps it was obtained through the city of Berkeley, since that's their street furniture. We didn't have any way to verify that, but we know that this was a concern that was identified by the commission in earlier reviews. So if the commission felt strongly there could be the potential there to secure an easement, since that approach is technically in Berkeley right of way.
Thank you. If there are no other questions of staff, we'll turn it over to the project applicant for a presentation.
Good evening, the commission and to the planning commission. As Christopher presented, the project has gone through numerous meetings with both Jeff Bond and the officials with FEMA, trying to resolve the issue of FEMA maps and the base floor elevation. And in conclusion, the owners have decided that the most speedy way to have this thing move forward is to raise the building three feet, to conform to the ordinance that Albany has. I do have a little anecdote at the end that I asked both the commissioners and the planners as to how this three feet was determined. So the, just to start with answering the question of the commissioner regarding the windows. So the design, for the most part, remains to be similar to the one that was presented previously, except for the fact that the garage and the area around the garage, which is the laundry room, need to remain at grade. So that increase in height is only for the second floor, so there's a higher ceiling elevation there. And therefore, the garage door remains at grade and the window next to it, same time. The access to the ADU also remained at grade, just to avoid a platform on the side of the building that will obviously impede access towards the back of the property, which was an issue that was of a concern of our neighbors. They emphasized that they wanted to continue to be able to access from the front of the property towards the back. So therefore, we had to add an additional flight stair at the very top of the building just to compensate for those three feet of additional height. And therefore, that door in that particular elevation remains at grade with a transom just to, so design-wise sort of matches the new raised windows. For the rest of the design, the windows pretty much remain the same, except that now the living room window has been, door, used to be a sliding glass door, has become a bit of a bay window, because now it's about three feet above grade, and the main two-story space now has an access to a buildup that stepped down towards the perimeter along the creek side of the building. Other than that, the materials remain the same. The skylight, obviously, we will comply to the conditional of lowering the height to meet the maximum heights allowable. And other items will be what's happening on the ground. You know, the entry now has a series of step, because now we're three feet above ground. There will probably be a requirement for some kind of a railing on the areas in which the drop is beyond 24 or 36 feet in this case, 36 inches in this case. Other than that, I don't believe there is anything that has changed substantially in the design. The, the only non-conforming walls that we're raising now, as Christopher mentioned, is the north-facing wall, that portion of the north-facing wall that used to be part of the existing envelope. The rest of the walls now are conforming to require setbacks.
Sorry, I can't hear. Is there a problem with the microphone? I can't hear.
Sorry, just please make sure to speak into the microphone directly.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. That's it. So any questions?
Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
No, not right now.
No. I did have one quick question. On one of the sides, one of our previous comments, I think it was my comment, was a request to include a window section or a window detail on the plans, and I didn't see any additional detail provided on the windows. Is that something that you have additional information on?
I do have a window detail, but it's not included in this, in this particular package. It's similar to something that we have done not far from this site that the planning has approved in terms of meeting the kind of setback and the shadow line that the city requires, and we can certainly provide that.
Can you describe maybe then, since we don't actually have that, what those details are?
So what we have provided in the past were, to meet the shadow line, is that we have a very thin and deep, two-and-a-half-inch-deep profile of the trim that goes around the window, just to create, especially in situations when we, when the siding does not allow it to be built around, similar to what a stucco facade is, with a two-inch recess. Our experience has also been that a lot of times, these two-inch recesses have created a lot of problems for, you know, water penetration and things that are not properly flush. So what we have proposed in the, in the past with success is that we provide a deeper, thinner, sort of very modern type of trim around the window that provides for that kind of depth that the, that the ordinance requires.
And what's the window material that you're proposing?
So we're providing a fiberglass window with, you know, similar to, I hate to use randoms, it's sort of Marvin Integrity type of window with, that is paintable, or that can adapt to different colors opposed to vinyl, which is always white. And then for the trim, it's going to be a painted kind of a wood type of a mill trim.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
A couple of questions. Sorry for coming late.
Yes.
Major BART delays. The survey shows a 54-inch walnut right where you, you show in your plan a 30-inch walnut. So it's a significant difference.
Which one?
The survey calls that walnut right, right adjacent to the deck as 54-inch diameter, well, it doesn't say diameter, it just says 54 inches. I'm not quite sure what, yeah. But your plan shows 30 inches. Is it a 54, 30? What's, it's a big, it's a big difference between the size of the tree. I'm trying, I'm gonna get, trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, the survey obviously should show the correct, the topos should show the correct diameter of that tree.
Okay, 54 inches, so that's.
It's fairly large, it's a very large walnut tree that is inside.
Okay, I am concerned about the, that encroachment onto that.
Yeah, so the deck, yes, I'm aware of the fact that the deck edge is very close to that. So the construction of that deck will have to either span over the root system from one end towards the house, which is something that we have thought about it, so to provide a long span just from the step up to the back, and that creates for some clearance and obviously, so it won't affect the, the root system of that tree.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, great. With that, we'll open it up then for public comment. So do we have speaker cards?
I don't have speaker cards, but I'm gathering by the attendance that we do have speakers tonight. So if you can fill out a speaker card, we need that for our beating minutes, so we have your names correct in the record.
So there are speaker cards you can fill out in the back if you'd like to speak, but otherwise, you can fill those out after the fact if you'd like to, one at a time, line up, and you have three minutes to speak, and please announce your name. Ma'am, would you like to speak?
So I'm an owner at 11.
And again, please speak into the mic as well.
So I'm an owner at 1145 Talbot, which is directly behind.
Behind, okay.
The structure. And within the last year, someone has come to the door of our home and talked to a 14-year-old child, asking if they had any problems with this house being built or restructured behind us. And never asked was a parent home, or left a notice that they came to speak to my granddaughter. And so I was kind of shocked that I was, I get these cards about the house.
Absolutely, yeah.
But we were not personally asked about problems we might have, and I've never seen these structures or this conformation of the housing until I saw it here. In fact, I looked for paperwork back here to see if I could see what it looked like and how close it was coming to the back of my house. And so I'm kind of amazed that they did a survey of a 14-year-old child about, did they have any problems with the house being restructured behind us? I mean, is that normal, that you don't ask? You know, they asked, does she live there? And yeah, she lives there, but she's 14, you know? And the other thing is, that, that house tree, the walnut tree, on two winters in the past three years or four years, huge limbs have fallen down from that tree. And also, the, the land that goes into the creek is, it looks like it's being moved before construction, and I don't know why, isn't there an easement next to the creek that they're not supposed to invade? I mean, I, I'm sort of like at a loss of what's going on. And I live right there behind where they're restructuring this. I own the property, so that's just my comment.
Okay, thank you. And could you please state your name into the record?
Sandra Lee Beckley, and I live at 1145 Talbot. It's a duplex, two-story, 1145 to 1147. My daughter, Samya Galoom, lives in the other part of the structure with her daughter, my granddaughter.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers now?
No one's turned in a speaker card yet, but I believe they have them.
Please go ahead and give it to Ann. And if there are any other folks who'd like to speak, please bring their speaker cards up to Ann. Yeah, so Louise Snitz, feel free to come to the podium.
For the record, that part of the driveway, I guess, belongs to myself and my husband. The dotted line that was referred to, the apron that was approved by Berkeley. It's ironic that my neighbor south of me demanded that the fence be replaced. This has nothing to do with your problem, but it just comes to my attention that neighbors can cause a lot of problems for each other by adhering to the dotted lines. And I'm not trying to make a problem, but life sure isn't fair. I've got a real problem neighbor who encroached, it's a long story, but isn't that interesting the way they actually need that little piece of property? And this woman, I mean, I got, it was, she was implacable, but I'm not going to do that way.
Thank you.
William Smith?
Hello. I couldn't really hear the engineer or see the picture up there very well, so I may be, something I say may already have been addressed, but I am just concerned about the effect of the property value of our house, on the property value of our house with the size of the restructuring of the house next door and how it will dwarf our house. And when we, if we go to resell, it would have a negative effect on, we'll be kind of put, we'll lose the sunlight in the backyard and so forth. And I know a lot of this is not something that, I just wanted to enter that into the record and have you guys take that into consideration. I do have a, I'm not clear on what's happening with the tenant door, whether that's being changed and moved forward. I remember hearing, the last hearing, how it would be kind of difficult vis-à-vis the inside of the house and what would have to change as far as that is concerned, as far as that's concerned. But I remember it being up for consideration, and I couldn't tell from the plans whether that had been done. It would certainly help our situation as far as privacy and easement. We share, we are at 1144 Evelyn, we're on the north side of the house, and that easement will certainly be affected by this change. And in the grand scheme of things, we'll just have to definitely be having to work together on sharing that space and, you know, without actually even stopping to think about what the actual property line is, just from day to day. And I, as far as anything else, I guess I'm just wanting there to be, going forward, a, a kind of a way for us to work together as far as making it as, making our property value and our, the aesthetics of this new structure. As, we want to work together on it and have it be a win for all of us as far as, you know, the city of Albany, the neighbors there, and the compatibility of everything going forward.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
The next speaker is Lisa Wenzel.
Hi. So, I also, I guess I seek clarity on the location of the tenant's door because when I looked at the plans online, the new plans, and my husband, Will, and I looked at them together, at least from our understanding of the online plans, the tenant's door appears to be in the same place as it was before, although there is one picture that almost looks as though it's moved, but it's really hard to understand because the pictures, some of them are rendered in, and I don't know the technical term for this, it's like a flattened version of 3D. So, I'm not 100% certain whether I'm understanding where this door is or not. We have a footpath that leads to our backyard that is slightly less than four feet, and our fence, if we measure from the wall of our house to the fence, is exactly four feet. So, I don't know what their measurement is on the other side, but the two properties really are very close together. So, that's just something that I, I think we've brought this up before, but it is something to keep in mind, particularly given the small size of our house, the large size of the proposed house next door, and the homes that are surrounding that large house. And I, you know, I want to certainly work with our neighbors too, but I do wonder whether it would potentially affect the amount of money we would get should we ever be in a position where we have to sell our house, because it's not going to be as appealing as it was, or would have been perhaps if the structure next door was a bit more proportionally sized as the surrounding homes are. So, that's that. But some clarity on where exactly the tenant door is would really be helpful, because I'm not really understanding the pictures, and it was, it was hard to see with the sun coming through the window earlier as well. That's it.
So, what is your address? You live directly north, right?
1144. Evelyn Avenue.
You're immediately to the, immediately to the north.
To the north, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
I don't have any more cards.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has not yet spoken? Okay. With that, then, public comment is closed, and we'll turn it back for commission discussion. Anyone want to jump in?
I don't know, I can start.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes. So, yeah, I'm pretty happy with the way that the applicant has responded to our comments, and I'm really quite happy with the design right now at this point. I don't think I have any objections to it unless other commissioners do. I think it's unfortunate, I guess, that we have some misunderstandings here or concerns from the neighbors. The neighbor behind on 1145 Talbot, we've been here, this is the third meeting we've had on this project, and you have gotten the notices. No one in the city of Albany ever goes out to talk to people. That's just not done. I don't know who would have ever come by to talk to you or your granddaughter unless the applicant did.
She came.
Okay, well, that might be, okay. That's good, that the applicant came and wanted to find your concern, so that's good. I'm glad to know that. Okay.
This isn't a dialect portion of the.
She made a good faith effort, I think. So, the way we work in Albany anyway, you get those notices and the written notices, and you do have the cards, and that's the public notice we have. And I will comment that the project conforms with the required rear yard setback that Albany requires for any new development. So, the closest piece of the home, of the proposed new home, would be 20 feet away from your fence, which is the backyard requirement that we have in this zoning district. So, and with respect to the door for the accessory dwelling unit, it does remain on the north side there. It, I can see it on the plans, it's probably, well, I can't tell how far back, but it is back from the, on the side of the building there. And I think that's what, I don't have a problem with that personally from a planning point of view, and I hope that the applicant and the neighbors will cooperate in making that pathway a workable pathway for both the neighbors and for the occupants of the accessory dwelling unit. I don't have a problem with it being located there. So, that, those are my only concerns. I think I had, I might have a little bit of concern about the design of the front facade right on the front street with the existing entry staircase gone. There's quite a big area in that, quite a big blank area on that wall right in there. And I've had some thought about it, and being out there today and looking at it, I think that it's a, if it's an issue at all, it's one that landscape planting will handle completely. So, in fact, the existing landscape planting is very dense on the front of the existing building, and I don't know what the applicant's plans are for maintaining that or pruning it back or replacing it, but if some of that is maintained, I think it would ameliorate my concerns about that wide-open space there between the garage door and the front entrance. I like the front, I like what you've done with the new front entrance. I think you don't have any choice but going up to three feet. I'm glad you've done that, and that will benefit you when it comes time to be exempt from floodplain insurance, which I think it will get you an exemption from the insurance. So, I'm okay with the project.
Any other comments?
I can jump in. I share pretty much all of Commissioner Donaldson's opinions and observations about the project. You know, with respect to the outreach, I just wanted to comment that we don't have any requirement in Albany that the homeowner or the landowner go around and talk to their neighbors. We do encourage it as a best practice, and I think, you know, it usually, it can help minimize some of the conflicts that do come up. And, you know, it's unfortunate if there was maybe a misunderstanding about, you know, the identity of who was being spoken to, but I think we all generally appreciate when the owners do go around and make good faith efforts. So, you know, that said, I think that, it sounds like that did happen here. On the door to the ADU, you know, I think if it, if that door was opening outward into the walkway, I think I would be much more concerned about it. It looks from the plans like it is going to open inward, and the fact that it's not creating any, you know, further encroachment into the existing walkway, you know, again, I think we would all encourage you, the neighbors, to work together to make sure that that walkway does remain usable. But it doesn't appear to be, you know, an unreasonable burden to place on that walkway for the ADU entrance. And, you know, with respect to the, you know, it's hard seeing change in your neighbor's property for a lot, a lot of the time it is. But I think in general, it's positive to see the continued investment in the housing stock in this neighborhood, and so, you know, hopefully that is something that will, in the long run, have a beneficial impact on the neighborhood. I do, I agree that the, well, we haven't actually talked much about the creek, I think, because we've talked about it so much at our prior meetings, but I appreciate the thoughtful approach that you've taken to pull back from the creek and to address the FEMA or the provisions in our code that incorporate the FEMA references to try to design around that. I think you've taken a reasonable approach, and I do agree that we should include conditions relating both to the creek. So, I liked the conditions that were attached, and a condition to lower the height of that skylight to make sure it conforms. But other than that, I think we have, you know, I think you've been attentive to our past comments, and again, I encourage you to continue working with neighbors to make sure that any, you know, use conflicts are minimized, but I'm comfortable that we have a good project here and one that conforms to the policies that we have in place.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with my colleagues. I've seen this project, but this is the third time now, or fourth even. And I'd like to applaud the applicants for making good faith efforts to address all the major concerns we've had. You know, I agree that, well, I think the size of the home, it's appropriate to the size of the lot, it's within our setbacks generally, and we do allow these non-conforming walls on a regular basis, so I'm comfortable with that, standing it vertically. Regarding the side door, I think it's fine to have it in the back. A three-foot passageway is perfectly adequate for access to it. Hopefully, you work out a way to share that space or work together to make everything feel comfortable and accessible going back for both of you. I'm fine with the design, I'm fine with windows. I still question the green roof, whether it's really of any real utility. If you want to put it up there, I suppose, there's no harm in it, but I don't see the benefit in doing it. But, and then solar panels, it'd be great if you can do it, but I have a feeling your roof is too shaded. The other comment, and I raised it before, I am uncomfortable with the second parking space. I am uncomfortable approving a parking space that's not entirely on your lot and accessed from a different property. I just don't see how that could, I could see how that could lead to problems in the future, depending on the other property owner. I have no problem with the curb cut in Berkeley, I doubt they would ever take that out, but Berkeley could. They could say they'd rather have a street parking space, but I doubt they would go to the expense of changing that. So, that is my one reservation about that parking space. I don't know what really to do about that, but if it were my house, I'd be rather uncomfortable having a parking space right after a drive across my neighbor's property. So, I don't know where to go with that, but if there's an easement, that might be one way to deal with it. If the easement's not granted, then what do we do? So.
I was thinking about this too. Is it okay if I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just because, and I don't know that I have, like, the answers, but I was thinking about this as well. I would definitely be uncomfortable with it if that was the only curb cut to the property, and it's not. There is a curb cut that's clearly in Albany and that leads to the garage. I think, you know, maybe it would be, it would have been more appropriate for us to be considering just elimination of the second parking space in hindsight, now that we know this information. But I think the fact that there is one, you know, Albany curb cut and a space that is fully within the enclosed garage, and the fact that there likely is, just as a matter of law, an easement that is in place, even though there, I understand there isn't anything recorded on the property. I'm inclined not to, I don't know that we want to necessarily get involved in dictating what the neighbors do to document that or not document it, because I think it's something that can be very fact-specific and fact-intensive, and I don't think we want to go down that rabbit hole. But anyway, that's, those are just some thoughts that I had about it. I think from a planning perspective, we have the basis to make the findings that we need to for Albany. It is a little funky, and again, just as, you know, being good neighbors would encourage you to try to figure something out to hopefully provide clarity about that in the future, but I'm comfortable making the findings.
On that point, just a quick question for staff. What is the minimum length dimension for, like, the parking pad-type space?
16 feet.
16 feet? So, they really are reliant on that area because it's only 15 feet in front of the garage, it looks like, through that first curb cut? Are there any provisions within the exception allowance to reduce the minimum dimension, or if it doesn't meet the dimension, then you don't have the spot?
Correct. It's the latter.
Okay.
I don't know what the dimensions are of the garage in terms of interior, but previously other commissions had required a recess of the garage door by a foot or so to make a 16-foot pad work in front of the garage and still maintain the appropriate dimensions for the interior of the garage.
So, the commission could add that as a condition of approval, and then our approval would be, would work either way, regardless of what, so we don't have to be back here having this conversation if something should happen with the curb cut in the future?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I could wrap it up. But I'm generally fine with what you've been saying, and, you know, I think we can let it go. It's an existing space that's been used for, what, 40 years, 50 years? So, I suppose there's a common law right to that. So, otherwise, I have no other objections to the project. So, otherwise, I have no other objections to the project.
Okay.
Yeah, a few comments. So, this is 45% FAR, so it triggers the exceptional, right? Which would require a landscape plan, or...
You could require it, if you feel that their treatment's not satisfied.
This is kind of a, you know, the survey is really slim on what's existing out there. And then, so, for instance, the 52-inch tree versus the 30-inch tree, now I'm hearing that it's dropping limbs, and so may, you know, first thought is to, how do we keep this preserved and not damaging construction? And my second thought is, how do we keep this from, if it is preserved, maybe it's very weak and it will fall on the house, and that could be just as bad. So, it's like, without this kind of, it seems like we're at the level, right next to the creek in a sensitive environment, we're triggered at exceptional level of design, and there's really nothing in the landscape that helps me at all inform what's going on in this site. I can't, the plan looks more of an illustration than an actual landscape plan. So, that's one thing that bothers me. I'll go circle back to that. We didn't address any of the planting in the creek. Usually, if we're giving a, we are giving a variance here.
No.
Not a variance.
Okay. Then, the parking is, so then it goes back to Ian's comment about the parking. Yes, I thought the same thing. If the house is south, I think it's very gracious of the owner of the house is south to not, to allow this and not make an issue. I think it's really great. So many people are thinking inches matter too much. But if you did sell the house, or someone else came in, they could change their mind on that really quickly. So, it seems like you'd want some kind of easement or something in writing to keep that spot valid. I can, the neighbor to 1145 Talbot, your house is closer than the 20 feet that, they're setting back farther from property line than your house's setback. So, you know, they are kind of doing the appropriate setbacks. So, I think they're giving the proper grace that's needed to the neighbor on the west. And on the north, the same issue. It is tight, but your house is within inches, it seems, of the house north of you. So, in relation, there are actually more space. So, relatively, the lots are all compromised. There's no one really doing it perfectly. This one's trying to do it, it's designing it to the current code. The other ones might have slipped by, or grandfathered in, or done before the codes, I'm not quite sure all the history, but none of them are setting back as much as this one is. So, that's something to be considered and appreciated. When I first looked at the design, I think I looked at the elevation first, and it struck me as kind of an awkward thing. And then, when I looked more at the existing buildings, so I see what they're doing, they're kind of modeling from the existing design and expanding upon that. And the elevation doesn't do it justice, like somebody mentioned. But if you look at the plan, it is really kind of an interesting building, and the shapes of the rooms, because of the awkward setbacks at the creek, really made some dynamic spaces, I thought. I like the entry. It's not your classic front door entry, but I think you can still see it from the street, and it kind of is a cozy space, like a porch would be, when you walk around and you feel, you can see the street, but you're still kind of sheltered from the street. The deck, I thought, was a little overly done and just kind of, why so much deck? I'm not quite, well, the deck I can understand, but all those stage kind of steps going down, it seems like it's, maybe it's kind of an amphitheater to look at the creek, I can appreciate that to some extent. But it did seem like it was really right on, almost bumping into the trunk of the walnut tree. So, there's something there I thought wasn't, wasn't really sensibly done. Maybe the deck should follow the setback line, so it gives more grace to the walnut tree, and still have a pretty good deck and pretty good steps. So, where do I go from here? The, I know you've been here, this is the third time, right? So, I think I voiced the landscape comment before. It, I guess what I would like to see done is, maybe it doesn't have to come back, but if you have at least an arborist report that looks at these trees to show that if they're healthy enough to be preserved, how are you going to preserve them? And a plan for that, and that can be part of the construction package. And if they aren't healthy, maybe some of the limbs that could, you know, cause damage should be removed, or, you know, it looks like a small tree for that size trunk. So, it looks like it probably has lost a lot of leaves. It's very tall, I know, but, I mean, if it didn't have the width that you would think of a walnut tree with that kind of trunk, you'd think would be a bigger canopy than that. So, it probably has dropped limbs over the years. It's a big, mature tree, hate to lose it, but, you know, it is right next to a new house, so I think an arborist would let you know what the condition is. And if it does have to go, it'd be nice to replant something that's more compatible to the creek, was my thoughts.
Great, thanks.
I have a couple more, too. Go ahead, or I can...
Sure, yeah, and I don't have a whole lot to add. I do share many of the comments that my fellow commissioners have. Just a couple additional points, though. On the first one, of the gentleman who spoke, who lives next door, expressing some concerns about the backyard, it does look that, when looking at the footprint of this building, that it's not going to be any deeper than your house. So, I don't anticipate that this building's really going to have a significant shadowing on your rear yard. I think most of the new volume of the building is effectively going to be adjacent to the roof of your building. So, just, I think that's a worthwhile note to have, is that, you know, the depths of your buildings are going to be roughly aligned. So, I'm not anticipating there really being a really adverse impact on the rear yards, and I am really sensitive to that. I do think in Albany, where we've got these smaller lots, really looking at where the building is sited on the lot, and how big it is relative to people's backyards is really critical. But looking at it, it looks like, right now, it's a fair amount shallower than your house, and it's going to be, you know, growing to effectively be the same depth. Slightly different shape, obviously, but roughly the same. Similarly, the, you know, I think with the exceptional design, the one thing I did, I was hoping to see on this, this current iteration, was just those little details about the windows, because it is a very simple design, and those, how you execute those details really can make or break the quality of the design, and I think I made that point last time. So, I think as you described the windows that you're planning, I don't have any concerns about that type of detailing meeting the exceptional design standard. I get a little nervous when those details, though, aren't on the plans, because we're approving effectively what is on the plans. So, I would just sort of put it on the record and for staff that, you know, there's definitely an expectation that, as you've described it, is what will get built, and not to have that be something that gets value engineered out of the project later on, because this will become a very different-looking building if, you know, vinyl windows with no reveal end up being installed, for example. So, I just want to make sure that that detail, I think, is really critical to the execution of this project. I would also be really supportive of Commissioner Ken's comments about requiring an arborist plan. I was also a little bit nervous about the proximity of the deck vis-à-vis the tree trunk, and so I think that's a good solution of not mandating a change in the current configuration of the deck, but having that arborist report really be the driver of any future changes that need to happen for, in order to preserve the trees. It seems like that's your intent and your desire is to have this still very lush backyard with the mature trees, and we just want to make sure that that happens for everyone. The parking pad is a little perplexing to me. I have a hard time with this, because I do feel if there's a future owner, if the neighbor to the south were to move, it doesn't seem like there's anything precluding somebody from putting up a fence on their property line there. And if somebody put up a fence there, you couldn't access the parking pad, and then you're no longer in compliance, and I feel like we're back having this conversation. And I don't think that's something anyone wants to do.
Right, so I just want to let the commission know. We did verify the interior measurements of the garage, so they could, in fact, recess that garage door by a foot, have a code-compliant garage space, and then the 16-foot parking pad, still located in the front setback, so the findings are still required.
Same.
But that would get two code-compliant parking spaces on site.
So, I would be very supportive of adding that as a condition, and then, even if you pragmatically use this space for the second parking spot, if things happen in the future, you at least still have that feature built into your house, and I don't, I don't think it'll be a detriment to the design in any way. So, yeah, those are my sort of, you know, general support of the project. I suppose with the conditions of, you know, ensuring that the windows in the construction package actually met those that were read into the record, the need for the arborist report, and then recessing the garage door by a foot to accommodate the parking pad solely on their own property. But with that, Commissioner Donaldson, did you have another comment?
I do have a couple more things, a couple more things. Let's see, first of all, regarding the tree, the big tree, my personal opinion is, I'm really glad that your intention is to keep it and not immediately remove it. I applaud that. I really like Chris's idea that we condition this on you having an arborist report, so that you know the condition of that tree, and you know if there are some weak limbs, and you can prune it and maintain it, so that it protects your house, and so you have a good idea of what's there. I think that's a really good idea. The staff has put together a creek protection plan that we, I think we requested that the last time. And my reviewing of it is that it is essentially a construction-period-focused creek protection plan. And what I'm hoping, I don't think I'm going to change the, ask for more, but I would really hoping to have the property owners think, say that you need to think about how you're going to preserve and maintain that section of the creek over the next 20 years, 30 years, 10 years, however long you live in the, so I think you need a creek protection plan, a long-term one, a creek landscaping plan, or something like that, so that you have an idea of how best to manage that beautiful resource you've purchased, you have right there, adjacent to your house. It's really an important thing, and I would really like to think that you could use benefits from some professional advice that goes beyond just what happens during the construction work, and how to protect it during the construction period, but a creek protection plan that has a long-term focus. I really like, I really would encourage you to do that. I don't think I want to require it, but I really encourage you to do that. And then, finally, I was thinking, again, some more about the comments we had on people concerned, the neighbors in the north in particular are concerned about the property values, the effect that this might have on property values. My personal take on that is that this is a major investment on a lot that's underdeveloped right now, that hasn't, that has a house on it dating to 1950. It's an old house, and that the investment of this money in, on this lot and in this part of Albany is going to increase property values generally. That, you know, the value of your land is probably going to go up, the value of the land around there is probably going to go up. So, I don't, I'm not, I don't, I don't share that concern, that anxiety about having your property values go down. In fact, they're going up in Albany in part because there's a huge demand for housing, and people are willing to pay a lot to live here and consider it to be a desirable community, and that trend will not change. And in fact, this is an example of someone who's willing to come in and invest a lot of money in Albany and in your immediate neighborhood, which will only help your property values, in my, in my opinion. So, those are my final thoughts. I have no more. I'm prepared to move approval, if you'd like.
Great.
So, with that, then, I'll move approval of planning application 19014 for design review, conditional use permit, and parking exception for the two-level addition on 1146 Evelyn Avenue. I'd like to add a condition that you, that the applicant prepare an arborist report and submit it to staff for review, and, you know, and follow the, follow the recommendations of a professional arborist with respect to maintaining that large tree on the property. So, are there any other?
The one-foot recess, for the, the one-foot recess for the parking pad?
Okay, I didn't quite understand, so you go ahead and add that, then.
Sure, sure. Recessing the garage door one foot, so that on their property, they have sole access to a code-compliant parking pad in the front.
They would be able to have a code-compliant, yeah, I understand.
Without need for an easement.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay, so...
It looks like the architect wanted the chance to respond. I don't know if we want to give him the chance, I just...
Sure, very, very briefly here. We're wrapping things up.
You could go back to the plan of the side plan. Must be there somewhere. There, right there.
Just to answer you, the concern that they have about the parking, the fact that part of the apron of the parking is sort of sitting on adjacent property, we thought about, when we got the story, we thought about it in some way, you know, what, in eventuality, that we don't have access to that driveway. And the way we are sort of designing the asset to this path is that it's still access through here, you know, the roof will be, like, really...
Yeah, that's what I thought, I saw that.
Still comply with having that space sitting, if that they can, so hopefully, we won't get into that, I think.
Sure. I guess, I don't know, my concern with that approach is that kind of kills all landscaping, and I think the last thing we want is to, through the regulations, encourage somebody from concreting over their front of their property so that they can make that turn. I would be much more comfortable asking for a one-foot setback of the garage door and having that done.
One foot will do it? Okay.
Okay, so you've got a motion with that one-foot recess on the arborist report?
I'd accept that, then, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any in opposition? Seeing none, that motion passes five to zero. That project has now been approved. Please do note that the story polls need to stay up for 14 days through the appeal period, and there is a 14-day appeal period for any interested members of the public. Great, that item is over, and we are now moving on to item seven on the agenda, which is new business. Item seven-one is an update on the city's cannabis policy.
Yeah, so this will be fairly brief. In 2017, the city council adopted an ordinance, effectively continuing their existing prohibition on cannabis activities in the city. And when they took action on that ordinance, they included a provision that in 20 months, we come back to the planning commission, then ultimately to the city council with just an informational report on how the process has been working at the state level. And so, in your packet, we gave you just kind of an overview, as well as a copy of that ordinance. And in a nutshell, you know, obviously, there has been enforcement within the state, kind of some lessons learned. The tax revenue is kind of a big one, where it's fallen short of what the anticipated revenue projections were when legalization was initially approved by the voters. It was anticipated to be about $1 billion, and instead, it was $345 million, so it's a little bit significantly less than what was originally anticipated. The other thing is that the black market for cannabis continues to be successful despite legalization efforts and just kind of doing a cursory review. The state seems to be actually focusing more of their enforcement efforts on minimizing the black market and trying to get growers, sellers, distributors to comply with the requirements of state law. And then, as part of that, we did reach out to our fellow colleagues at cities where cannabis is legalized, so this included San Leandro and Emeryville, both of which have lawful cannabis regulations. Both jurisdictions have indicated to us that they have had a fairly smooth regulatory process. They both went through RFP processes to select different manufacturers, distributors, sellers, that type of thing, so they've worked pretty closely. The interesting thing they noted was that the building permits tended to be more challenging, depending on the scope, because it's kind of a new area of manufacturing in particular. There was kind of a lot of unknown with that, so that had added some time to their reviews. But kind of the key thing, the key difference between Albany and those two jurisdictions is that they have the in-house capacity to have a designated staff person, whereas we do not. And I think that was part of why the council thought it, you know, more appropriate to go with a prohibition than a legalization, because of really not having the same, the same resources for implementation. And so, that's kind of the long and short of it. There's no action for the commission to take on this, it's just information only.
I guess I just have a quick question, since I wasn't here when that ordinance went through. Is, is any of the intent of this report back to relook at any of those past decisions? Or, I mean, the fact that nothing was allowed, what was kind of the spirit of the 20-month look back, just like success in other cities and kind of gauging that temperature?
Yeah, I think it was, it was really a wait-and-see attitude with the state to see how effective they would be with the licensing process, and really to, yeah, again, take that wait-and-see look, and look at 20 minutes, 20 months later, and say, okay, what was working, what wasn't working, and would it be in our interest?
Well, I mean, I can just... Well, I mean, I can just chime in, just because I'm very familiar with San Francisco's, San Francisco, obviously, has legal recreational cannabis, as well as medical cannabis, and I'm pretty involved on the permitting side of that. And certainly the resource issue, San Francisco is very heavily resourced, staffing-wise, we have a dedicated office of cannabis, dedicated through, effectively, I think, under the mayor's office, that's staffed on that side. And then even within the planning department, we have a dedicated senior planner who coordinates the whole cannabis permitting process, and then we probably have four or five other staff who actually work on those permits. So certainly, the resourcing is dedicated, and there, there's also, obviously, in San Francisco, a large demand for a variety of different types of cannabis, not just cannabis retail. Cannabis retail has been the one that's had, I think, some of the biggest sort of permitting constraints, with like buffer boundaries from, so like in San Francisco, it's a rule of 600 feet from schools or other establishments that are open, other retail-type establishments of either medical or recreational, which in certain parts of town, kind of preclude the ability from any being able to open up, and if you were to think about Albany, that would be a pretty tough combination to do from, from schools. So there have been a lot of conversations about the equity of that, and sort of the equitable distribution throughout the town. But, yeah, and I won't go into all the details of San Francisco's programs, because it's a very different demographic here, but the interesting thing that has come up, at least there, is sort of the false assumption that having a cannabis retail establishment will result in more crime. And in fact, in many, many cases, it's actually proven to result in a safer environment, because they pretty much all have security, and they have a lot of eyes on the street. They're required to have safety and security plans, whereas other businesses in the, you know, bars next door don't have to have that same type of oversight. And I think from a design review perspective, too, I've seen them come a really long way from, you know, tinted-over windows with bars on the windows, and a very different environment, to some that look like an Apple Store, that are beautifully, beautifully designed, with transparent storefronts, and you would walk by and have no idea that it's a cannabis dispensary. And, you know, there's just the, they've come a long way. That industry has come a long way. And I think there also is a very big push to try to sort of de-stigmatize, especially in the retail world, that it's only targeting a certain demographic of our population. And so I think we're seeing more and more retail establishments that are targeting very different demographics. And so, I don't know, we've gone on like a lot of site visits to these places to see what's sort of the pros and cons of their storefront, and the different rules about, you know, you can't see the product from the street, is one of the state regulations, and sort of the different creative solutions, other than just tinting over windows and things like that, that I think some urban design challenges. So, you know, I was reading in the staff report, there's a lot of concern about increasing crime and things of that, and I would just personally challenge that that statistic may have not actually borne out, now that places have legal recreational cannabis dispensaries. And I also think it's a, there's a very interesting industry on more of the industrial side of cannabis, you know, not just the growhouses, but like in San Francisco, there are, you know, laboratory testing facilities, and other kind of almost more like high-tech and manufacturing side of cannabis, that I really think aren't, they're hardly even what we would think of as sort of a cannabis business coming in. And I think there could be a lot of opportunity with not a whole lot of sort of negative side, you know, these aren't places that are necessarily even producing cannabis, but just using cannabis byproducts for other kind of manufacturing, that, you know, it's sort of unfortunate to just lump it into some of these presumptive ideas about it being the same type of business. So those would just be my two cents, if you will, of sort of being familiar with the permitting process.
Just, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, because Oakland, our office is downtown Oakland, Oakland had a lot of shops years ago, and there was a fair amount of crime, but they never reported it, because they wanted to have the perception of no crime. And they got broken too, I bet, but when you look at the records, there's nothing reported. I don't know if that's still the case, maybe that's different, but that, that's the baggage it's carrying, you know, I think.
Well, I was just gonna say, from being on the commission, when we adopted the last ordinance that asked for this, you know, sort of interim report, there was interest at the time, and, I mean, I was certainly interested in at least, you know, keeping the door open to revisit the prohibition in Albany, because I think, although, you know, there have certainly been challenges and bumps in the road, as the state has rolled out this whole recreational cannabis program, and, you know, the, I think the articles you provided all kind of are in that vein, and illustrating some of the challenges. But, you know, I still think there's a lot of evidence to indicate that part of the problem is, or part of the challenge in bringing this industry within the sort of regulatory umbrella, is prohibition attitude in a lot of jurisdictions. That's not the only issue, certainly. I think, you know, the state still has a long way to go in terms of figuring out the tax piece and the licensing, and I think, you know, trying to set the regulatory burdens at the right level, that, you know, accounts for the seriousness of the issues, but doesn't make growers or sellers, or, you know, distributors just throw up their hands and say, screw it, I'm going to make more money on the black market. So anyway, that's a long way of saying that I, I don't know if there's any, if there has been any clamoring from anyone to, you know, open any sort of cannabis facility in Albany, but I do hope it's something that, you know, continues to be in the conversation about whether it's appropriate to revisit that. And I think that, you know, this was, this was good information, and I was glad that there were conversations with San Leandro and Emeryville. I think, you know, perhaps for whatever you end up presenting to the council, it would be helpful to have a few more data points about what other cities, like, I know Berkeley is obviously much bigger, and has its own issues, but as our closest neighbor, and a city that's been regulating, you know, cannabis sales at least for a long time, I think, you know, having just some more information about their, their program, what's going on in Oakland, and San Francisco, and other Bay Area cities, you know, including, are they allowing it, not allowing it? Are there a lot of, you know, how many permits are being issued? I know you guys have day jobs, so I'm not suggesting that you have to go crazy on compiling this information, but I think those would be just helpful data points to have. And, you know, also providing information about whether there have been any inquiries of staff relating to, you know, cannabis facilities in Albany. So, yeah, those are my, my thoughts, and, yeah, thanks for the presentation.
I have some more thoughts, some of that Megan has. We, I know that the citizens of Albany voted in support of recreational marijuana, and by a good margin. And then we turned around and said, well, not here. And so that, that is a bit of a, a bit of a hypocrisy that bothers me a little bit. So what I'd like to know, I don't have information here, I'm interested in, like, how easy is it for citizens of Albany to get their, get their cannabis, if they want it? And I know that we allow deliveries, probably no records of how many deliveries are made. I'm sure no one, you don't know that, you can't know that, probably. But, and you see billboards coming across the Bay Bridge, advertising, huge billboards advertising, and so I know, it's certainly happening. You have, so we have that. We probably still have marijuana dispensaries around us, in Berkeley, Richmond, I'm sure. And if, if we're going to look at this, and, I mean, I think we should not, we should look at it again in the future at some point, I don't know when that point is, but one consideration is, if it's, if it's just a mile or two away from most of citizens of Albany, maybe Albany never needs to, never needs to legalize it, because we're such a small city. It still can, our citizens can still get what they want conveniently, and I think that, that they can get the service they want from Berkeley or Richmond, then, that's fine. But it'd be good to know that in going forward, and having some idea about that. And then finally, it is important, I think, have you, has the client department had inquiries? Have you had people coming in and saying, I'd like to open a dispensary on such and such, and what's your rules? And the extent of, then whether is there some pressure to have a dispensary on San Pablo or Solano?
I will say, we've had kind of a general inquiry, different firms, I think, that are just kind of doing sort of general jurisdictional data compiling. We'll call just to, you know, say, does the city allow it, yes or no? We get those calls maybe once every other month or so, but they're doing that kind of statewide. I would say in the past year and a half, we had one interested party, someone who had grown up in Albany, had relocated back to Albany, I think had been doing cannabis elsewhere, and was interested in a facility on Cleveland Avenue, but because of the prohibition, obviously, that, that didn't work. But that was really the only serious interest that we've had since the ordinance went into place.
A little off-subject, but I remember we discussed the homegrown issue, right? And we were kind of torn whether people were allowed, people to grow it in their backyard, or you had to mandate they put it in the building, if they put it in the backyard, do we have fences? Where did that land?
So you can grow your own plants, and I believe we allowed it, the preference was to have it, I think, partially concealed. I mean, it could still be outside, but, you know, maybe a cover or something like that, just so that, you know, it wasn't quite obvious to adjacent neighbors.
Right, the new front yard.
And the idea was to protect your, your plants from theft or vandalism.
I'd like to just, yeah, agree with most of the comments. It is allowed by state law, Albany voters approved recreational marijuana. I think we should revisit the issue and, you know, consider allowing dispensaries in Albany. I do remember a few years ago, five or six, somebody tried to, or there was an application, but got a lot of heat, if I remember.
Yeah, there were some medical dispensary applications for, right around someone.
Not very far. I remember the buffer zones, sort of, when you, when you drew them, there was like concentric circles, there was nothing left, basically.
Well, there was Cleveland, right?
Maybe out of Cleveland Avenue, so...
But then the park went in, and then that knocked that out.
Yeah. So finding a suitable location would be key, you know, that does somehow avoid buffer zones. I don't, you know, it sounds like it's a pretty big staff burden in San Francisco, I don't know how that would affect us here. We're not going to have dozens of them, but state law, I think we should be doing what we need to do to reduce people going to the black market. I think that's a huge problem. It's hugely environmentally destructive. Those growers were not abiding by any regulations, they're creating great havoc in the forests and elsewhere, and it's illegal, dangerous, organized crime takes over. So that's to be discouraged and avoided as much as possible. So if there is a way that Albany can contribute to making it more legal, or work better legally, I think we should consider it.
So it's the more imperative?
Well, I think so.
I think you're right, actually.
There's a lot of, you know, if Mexican drug cartels are controlling the illegal marijuana trade, I want no part of that, or whoever, you know, and whatever we can do to avoid that, or reduce it, and fill our tax coffers, like, you know, I have no problem with that either, so...
Any other comments? All right. And I accidentally closed the agenda, but I, oh, here we go. That is it on the agenda, next meeting, or any announcements and communications?
Just a reminder that after tonight, you're on recess, so we'll see you after Labor Day.
Great, so our next meeting is September 11th at 7:00, and with that, we're adjourned.
I'll be missing the meeting, a second meeting in September, and probably the first one in October.
Going somewhere fun?
Yeah, sure. South Dakota, and then a road trip, long road trip, yeah.
Oh, you're driving from here?
Yeah, long road trip, yeah. And Utah, and, yeah, Colorado, and Idaho, and, yeah.
That is really nice.
Yeah, yeah.
It like, it looks like a fancy wine bar.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is one in San Francisco, it's like...
Yeah, we'll be gone almost a month, I think, just, just about a month, yeah.
They can't serve wine, but it looks like a fancy wine bar, basically. Yeah, you don't, and sort of, this is their, like, branding, you know, it's like the storefront has totally transferred.